Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 17th, 2023 School Committee Meeting being held here in the Foxborough Town Hall. We always appreciate that people show up in the audience, but we always appreciate cable access. They're broadcasting this meeting live, and of course, they're recording it as they always do every week. So, thank you, Foxborough Cable, for helping us out. First is open public comment, and I didn't see anyone when I walked in. Has anyone here signed up for open public comment that I missed? Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we had on the agenda the approval of minutes, but as you all know, you did not receive the minutes in the package, so we do not have minutes to approve at this meeting. Thank you. Then, next on the agenda, which is always very exciting for us, and I know we really enjoy it here at the school committee, when our students come to visit with us at the school committee meeting. So, if you guys would all love to come up here to our table, we'd like to welcome this leadership elective presentation. I know Dr. Burtis will entertain it, so come on up, everyone, and make sure when you talk, you use a microphone.
So, as they're making their way to the guest table, you're going to be hearing from some of our students that have really made a difference for other students at the Ahern Middle School. And we have Ms. Frazier sitting there in the back, she's back there as well. But as far as our wonderful teachers, Ms. Ritchie who's here, Ms. Anas is here, and Senor Diorcy. But they're going to be talking to you about something that's new this year that they have done as web leader, so I'm going to turn it over to them. I don't know, Ms. Anas, who am I turning it over to first?
Senor Diorcy.
All right.
Hi, I'm Zach Diorcy, I'm a Spanish teacher at Ahern and one of the web coordinators for this year.
Hi, I'm Leigh Ritchie, I am a Spanish teacher for fifth, eighth grade. I am one of the web coordinators, and I also run the leadership elective.
And then, I'm Brita Anas, I'm the literacy specialist in grades five through eight, and one of the web coordinators. On the next slide here.
Who has the remote?
No, it's not the clicker. Paul's going to have to advance the slides for us.
Just give us one motion if you're watching from home, we're getting the slides to work, thank you.
So, while we're waiting for the slides, the idea behind web in general is to make sure that all students feel connected to the school. Particularly, the program was set as a transition program for our fifth graders. So, when the fifth graders come into the school, our eighth graders mentor and support them in their transition to middle school. Last year, we had a lot of new students joining us, but especially even this year. And so, we've been creating a leadership elective so that we have more time with our eighth graders to really develop their skills as leaders. Part of that is developing their self-awareness and self-management. We're also looking at decision-making skills and responsible behaviors, and social awareness and interpersonal skills. That last goal of our elective is really specific to why we're here tonight. So, one of those main pieces is that the kids really are working to establish and maintain positive relationships. This particular event is to help our students who are new to the Ahern, not just our fifth graders, but all students, sixth, seventh, and eighth, make a smooth transition and also connect with other peers. So, from this point out, our leaders are going to take over and kind of explain some of the images and visuals that they wanted to share with you.
So, we are web leaders, and what web stands for is where everyone belongs, and that's really our motto.
Can I ask you to introduce yourself? I'm so sorry to interrupt you, because I know you were planning your -- but when you speak, just tell us who you are, so we know who you are. Thank you very much, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
It's fine. I'm Sammy Marsh, and this is Alina Pham, and yeah, we're part of the web program. And we really like to make everyone feel like they belong and welcome to our school.
Yeah, so like that, you know, we helped the fifth graders smoothly transition into the middle school, so we thought that it'd be good to do the same for new students who also came in the middle of the school year to help make them more comfortable and transition better in the school.
We're just waiting on a couple of slides.
Let's do next. Thank you.
All right, so this was a group project that I participated in along with a couple of their web leaders, and we made this welcome board to welcome new students, especially like some of the migrant students that speak different languages into our school. So, on this board, we have hello in many different languages, because I like to say hello is the first word in a friendship, and I think that this project, like when they come into the school, they can say, "Oh, that's my language," and they can see that. And maybe other people like me who mainly only speak English, we can learn new languages and use that to help welcome the other students that speak different languages.
And you are?
Yeah.
I was just going to say.
I'm McKenna.
Thank you, McKenna.
So, this is from when we were preparing for our meetings with the fifth graders and with the new students. The picture in the middle there is us learning the games in the classroom where we have leadership elective. And the picture to the far right is the invitation that the new students got, inviting them to the new student meeting.
And then, on the left is a list of questions that we asked as we were like having snack, just so that we could get to know each other and be a bit more comfortable. And some of those questions were like, "What's your primary language? What are some hobbies you have?" And like, "How are you liking the Ahern so far?"
I'm Rochelle Wall, and I spent time with the seventh graders during the new student meeting. And the meeting was a very fun and collaborative way to connect with our peers. And the games were very helpful since they weren't dependent on any language. And many of the kids in my group, English wasn't their primary language. But laughs and smiles were still shared, and we all were supportive of each other while learning new things along the way. I did introduce myself.
I'm Aleah. I didn't work with the seventh or sixth graders, I worked with the eighth graders. And so, the activities we did were, I feel like, really helpful for it not being as using much English or speaking anything as it like, we did more of like, activity-wise instead of speaking. And it was like, really helpful for them to like get to, for each of them to get to know each other. And they also, like, people were helping each other out, and like, everyone was smiling and laughing, and they're having a really good experience.
And working with the new eighth graders really allowed us to build upon the relationships that we already had with them.
Hi, I'm Noah.
I forgot everything I had to say. I forgot what to say. I don't know what to say.
You got Noah? Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Noah, thank you very much.
I do, can I ask what you did, Noah?
I was with the sixth graders. We played the same games that all the other groups played, and we had snack with each other.
Did you have that same experience, that even though you didn't all maybe speak the same language, you still were able to have fun and interact?
Mm-hmm.
Anyone have questions?
I do.
Rob?
Always.
Sure.
What was the thing that, what was one thing that surprised you all the most when you started this process and you met the new students?
So, I had a kid in my group that, right off the bat, I was aware they had different pronouns than everybody else. So, one thing that I really appreciated was when I asked everyone their pronouns and went around, they went by he, she, they, preferably she. And everyone completely respected that, and they all called her by the pronouns that she preferred. And I think it was a really beautiful thing to see how everyone can completely respect everyone, even if they identify as something different.
Thank you, that's great. Anybody else? Thank you for sharing that.
And in my group, there was one child that had learning and hearing disabilities, but everybody played their part by including them and like trying to help them like deal with their emotions. And I found it really beautiful how they didn't exclude the person, but instead tried their hardest to include the person.
Mine's a little bit simpler, but we played a name game, and some of the students had foreign names that were kind of difficult for us to like get used to and remember and pronounce. But as we continued playing the game, I found that some of our kids like made an effort to try and say those names and call them out so that they could include them. That was really nice.
That's awesome.
What advice would you give to people who might be considering being a web leader next year? Because I know you all gave up some time over the summer to prepare and do this, and it's actually, it's no small thing.
Some advice I would give is just go with the flow and support the kids. Just have fun while you're doing everything, and try not to get scared.
That's good advice.
I'll try to keep that in mind.
Any other questions from anyone?
I got one more, sorry.
Yeah?
If this had been in place when you guys started the Ahern, would your experience have been different when you first started there?
I would say yes, because I think that the web leaders provide a big amount of support. And when the fifth graders see us in the hallway, they can be like, "Oh, I know an eighth grader." And I think when you know someone that's in the highest grade, you feel like this sense of pride, like, "Oh, I know someone that's the oldest." And it brings a smile to their face when they see us, because they know, they're not scared to interact with us. They're like, "Oh, that's my web leader, they're really nice, and I do all sorts of fun stuff with them." And they can go home and be like, "We did this with the web leaders today." And I think if we had that, our transition would have been a lot, a little more smoother, and we would have felt a little more comfortable getting to know more people around the school.
And for us, we definitely had a different experience because we were going into fifth grade during COVID. So, for us, the social was like already, it was a bit lacked, right, since we were online. So, the web leaders definitely gave us a feeling of confidence and like, "Oh, I definitely know these people that want to support me." And it really helped us like get used to middle school.
There's one more thing. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you all, thank you.
That's great.
I have a question after you.
My other question, did you all, or have you had a chance to give advice to your advisors? Because I know them to all be very dedicated and open-minded humans, but have you had that chance yet?
I think we did. I mean, we reflect on, after everything we do, we reflect, and they're like, "Oh, what was good about this and what was bad about this?" And I think they take that advice and they put that into maybe what will happen with the web leaders next year.
So, you already built that in to the process?
They definitely take into account how they can improve for next year.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, I had, can I ask one, I had one general question for everyone to answer. I think leadership is outward, but it's also inward in what you learn about yourself. Did any, is any thoughts that you have about what you might have learned about yourself or about the experience when you decided to become a leader and some, or get out of your, get out of a shell or anything like that?
I learned that I'm very good with kids. Like, I, they, my group really likes me.
Congratulations, Noah.
On the contrary, I've always known this, but I learned that I'm very, very stiff. So, my kids do not love me as much as the others.
That's not true.
So, yeah, I just, I think I'm a very just upright person, so it's like, I feel like I'm less of a friend to them and more like a, like mentor and other leaders, so I want to try and be more comfortable with them.
So, there you go, that's what you learned, right? Yeah, change your comfort level, yeah, nice.
I have one. When it comes to like speaking to new people, I'm not all that good with it. But when I became a web leader, I was like more, like I was a lot more fluent with speaking to new people, especially people who are younger than me. And it made me feel like a lot better about myself and how I could improve their lives and like make them feel good about themselves as well.
That's great.
Well said.
I was just going to add, not only are they helping their peers, but I also witnessed them help a lot of parents when it was open house, where their parents were lost at the Ahern and couldn't find their way around.
I've been there.
They were great tour directors, if you will, but just the smiling face for everyone and making you feel immediately, we know that that's one language that we all speak, is when you see the smile. And every time you see them, the shirts that helps you identify, but with their peers, but then also just watching you help parents and adults, which shows your comfort level and how much you kind of stretched that. And when I think back to when Ms. Frazier was the assistant principal when this first started, and I know Ms. Ritchie too, like there's so much, and Ms. Anas, like so much has happened involved from that. So, they're definitely reflecting on how to continue to make it grow and be better, and it's continued to be better every year, and it's because of all of you.
Yes. And if you look over here, Nathan was one of our first web leaders.
Of course he was.
So, to see it come full circle is pretty gratifying too, as one of the coordinators of the program.
That's great. Not surprising, but that's awesome.
And a lot of thanks to our teachers who put in a lot of time and effort for this.
I was about to say that too. Thank you for the teachers for your leadership.
Thank you.
And thank you, students, again for being here, being, and being leaders. You're making a difference in your school community, but you're making a difference in our broader community as well, making our school a better place, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question for all of you.
For you.
If you had the chance to become a web leader, would you take it?
In a second, in a second.
Yes.
Yes. My daughter was a web leader.
I would now, I don't know if I would have had the confidence or presence of mind at your age. Truly, I mean, I would have loved to have been able to put myself out there, but I don't know if I would have. But yeah, that's one of the reasons I'm so impressed that you all just are doing this, or have done this and will continue to do, so thank you.
Thank you all, well done, well done.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was nice, that was always good to see.
Wonderful public speakers, too.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah?
I know, I think, Brett, you said it well, you reflect on what you would have done in that situation at that age. Makes you wonder, try to get back and, very good.
No, it's one of the, I'm so impressed that they've put themselves out there.
Yeah. Next on the agenda is our open meeting law complaint discussion. I think all the committee members were forwarded the open meeting law complaints. And as you probably read even in the first page of all complaints, one of the responsibilities we have as the body is to look at them and evaluate them and develop a response to that too. So, didn't know what discussion you would like to have as members of the committee about the open and meeting law complaints. I think there were five of them in total.
It looked like to me, and maybe it was a computer error, and I can't find them in print, but I have them on my email, it looked like two were duplicated. Am I correct?
I think they were similar but entered by different people.
Okay.
Yeah, there were some similarities. Any discussion or questions by the committee of how best we can respond to these?
My general response is, I'm always grateful that people are paying attention. I'm always grateful that they choose to share their feedback with us. And so, that's, it's more gratitude for people expressing concern.
Well, I could begin from my standpoint, from my perspective as your chairman, that there was some discussion in the complaints about probably more aligned with Robert Rules of Order process as opposed to maybe open meeting law. So, I just wanted to formally say to the committee and to the town that might be listening that I apologize for my lack of sharp leadership in the realm of Robert's Rules of Order, trying to maintain process and questions and dialogue amongst the committee. I found it challenging at that meeting, and so I exhibited that in my behavior. So, I do think there's a few of those questions in there that are very related to Robert's Rules of Order process, because we were in an open meeting doing it. So, I think my personal ability is to sharpen my skills and to be attentive to how I've helped guide, guide us as a body on Robert's Rules of Order and process. So, I do think there's a couple in, maybe all of them, but there's a couple that are very much pointed at Robert's Rules of Order and process. So, I think, you know, improving processes is important from my standpoint, for me. And I think we can articulate that in a response, that we will be attentive to process, especially as it is for maintaining the order of a meeting. Any other thoughts from anyone?
Really?
No, Sarah, go ahead.
No, no, I just didn't know what the procedure was. I didn't know that it was just a discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a new one for me too, it's not, these don't happen a lot to all of us, do they? So, it was a new one to me too, so, you know, I was just reflecting on what I understood there to be the case. And I, it's clear in the guidance there that we do have to give a response. The response does have to be made to the attorney general and to the person, so. Just thought we could, if there's any dialogue you want to add, we want to add to that.
Is it just one response to everyone and to the attorney general? Or is it five separate responses?
My impression of reading them and the way I digested them, I think, I think there's a response to each one as deserved.
Okay.
You know?
Okay. So, then, in this discussion, we have to determine what the five responses will be?
Yeah, I think, I think our dialogue should help guide the response. Now, our notes, our notes and our discussion here can help guide the response. And I do think it's pretty clear in here, one of the options they offer is how best to delegate that responsibility to respond. So, I think our dialogue and our thoughts here will help guide those responses to when it's finally completed.
Okay.
I would think.
I know there were some complaints there of things like that I was unaware of, like, I was unaware of Robert's Rule of Order. So, good thing I'm not Cher. And also, agenda complaints, like as far as time, like those things, there were a lot of things that I was unaware of, so those issues. So, all I can say is like, we'll make a point of following those rules from now on. I didn't know we needed to specify that it was being recorded, you know, things like that. It's, I think I felt a lot of that, there was a good portion of it, which is things like as I read them, was like, I didn't know that that was something. And again, we'll make, take care to address those from now on.
I think we can.
Other than that, I don't know what else.
Yeah, regarding the timing to that one, we have in the past actually held things on the agenda. If we were moving forward, we've held them and kind of moved them around, but I felt like we were somewhat on within a few minutes, it wasn't 45 minutes or something. I think one time we were like a half hour ahead, you know? And so, we moved something on the agenda just to try to stay in line with the time, because we had people coming, but.
So, I guess my question would be in that case, because we certainly should have the flexibility to adjust. It's probably more important, as the complaint pointed out, to just note on the agenda that times are general, and we make no guarantee that we will stick to those posted times. We will follow the flow of the meeting as appropriate. That's probably a safer response for all of us, because guests get delayed, they can't show up, something takes longer than we thought it was going to take. So, I think a note on the bottom of the published agenda is probably the right route to go in that case.
I agree, just like an overall, general thing, and then that'll take care of that issue.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great idea too. And I agree with you, Sarah, that there have been moments we've gone both ways, later, earlier, you know, and we've waited for people to move things around, so. It's tough, it's challenging in a fluid meeting. We were ahead today by five or 10 minutes.
And it is the chair's right, as always, if we decide to defer public, open public comment, because the number of people, as we discussed during COVID, when we had so many people that wanted to speak, we would adjust, sometimes we put it at the beginning, sometimes we put it at the end, sometimes we split it up simply because of the number of people that wanted to share something about their experience during that time. So, I think it is important to always give the chair the flexibility to adjust the agenda as needed based on what is happening in the meeting in the room. So, again, that's why the note and the published, and the published agenda is probably the right way to go there.
Yes, Brett?
Did anybody have any more comments on the time thing? Because we can, if we're going to discuss them, we can kind of go down.
Sure.
My, I would echo what other folks had said on the time thing. We want to be open and transparent, but at the same time, we want to get the meetings and not keep people here unduly long or surprise people. So, I think that's, I think it's, I think Mr. Canfield's suggestion is appropriate. Because I think the alternative would be either cutting off discussion that we're still having, you know? We've all been in part of meetings where we've been receiving reports and things that involve a lot of data, and we have a lot of questions, and cutting that off prematurely would be a bigger dereliction of our duty, I think, than, you know, if we're running long. And then, on running short, I don't think it behooves anybody to sit here in silence and wait for the clock to tick down. So, if that, if that solution that Mr. Canfield is proposing is something that's acceptable within the, within open meeting law, then I would advocate we do that.
Let's look into it, yeah, that makes sense, that's a, that's a good solution for us.
Thanks.
Sure.
Which one do you want to hit next?
Whichever you'd like.
Sorry, I'm, I, like, do it how you want, but like I was, you said, if you suggested we're going to, we should go down and discuss them, and we should. Can I take a stab at what some of the folks who had entered is number two?
Okay.
This would be the one, and I'm hopping between all of them, I should have printed them out like you did, Mr. Pearson.
Yeah, I thought we were going to have them, yeah.
No, I'm hopping between tabs, and that's okay. But is the idea of outside discussion and pre-meeting communication or serial communication? I love that phrase, I hadn't heard of that. I think anybody watching can see the level of questions and disagreement in our discussion as enough evidence that that simply didn't happen. Because who would want anything to come off as that? I mean, is that fraught with questions and whatnot? Like, anyway, that's a response. I think a second response is to say, we're, at least in my tenure on the committee, we've been very careful about that. And for my part, if there's, there would be hardly any wording that in your example Mr. Pearson had presented, because I think your idea of keeping us organized and having something written, I wasn't likely going to be surprised by anything that would have been written that's in any way related to any way to slice the mascot policy, because when I was the chair a year ago, we were looking at these, I literally looked up all the motions that other schools made. And so, I mean, I didn't have, I was able to understand the language pretty quickly. And having, from the earliest time, toyed with different ways of phrasing it, because again, a year ago I was the chair, and I saw that as my duty as chair, that for my part, that's my response to, my response to seeming shockingly familiar with what was going to, with motions that were presented, because I think I mentioned in the meeting, like, hey, is that what KP did? Because I think it is, I went back and looked, and their policy solution was, let's just stop funding it. Okay? That's one way to go. There's, other communities have gone other ways, and I've seen that wording too, so that's just me. I guess I don't have any other response for that.
Yeah, I agree the same, same point, we've been talking about it for some time, and I've known some of the motions and looked into it myself as well to see what else is out there, where we've, where it's gone, so that we better understand it. So, I would agree with you wholeheartedly. I know for a fact what I did was, I was trying to help organize, to be helpful to us, because I felt it was a complex, complex motion and a complex issue for us. And so, I actually worked with the superintendent on Tuesday afternoon to write that numerous, that sheet of motions, which included a whole host of motions, included some that we spoke about, included a few others that were the opposite of what we proposed. And so, my idea was to have something in front of us for a complex detailed issue that would, would help guide us so that we might not be searching for words. So, that was, that was my goal as well too. So, I had no serial communication either about that, as much as I was just trying to prepare us for success to the best of our ability.
And to that, and I think, so in the year-ish, not a whole year, but in, prior to you becoming chair, Mr. Pearson, me being in that role, I had had similar discussions. Chair, Mr. Pearson, me being in that role, I'd had similar discussions with Dr. Berdus in terms of not wanting to, of different ways, imagining different ways that, not knowing the mind of the committee, imagining different ways that the vote could go, but also being conscious of not wanting to blunder into causing problems for administration with a certain approach, because, and I just think that's, from my take on, for me, in my role on the committee, I wanted to get admins' take on different approaches, just because if all, if the five of us, or I'll just speak for myself, if I'm advocating something up here that's going to like, cause, you know, a principal issues, or the superintendent issues, or the business office issues, I think it's responsible of me to have that discussion with them prior. And so I've had those discussions, I guess, what was it, last spring? Prob- And this, yeah, so, anyway. And wanting, being conscious of that, so. That's just my take on that one. But I don't know if anybody else has other thoughts?
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Yeah, I mean, I will go along with, because it's, I had thought through what possibilities were. And, you know, based on research, I was even doing research, doing research on the day of the meeting, particularly around what Wayland and Lincoln Sudbury had both done. Both warriors, Lincoln Sudbury with an LS, Wayland with something that had flaming arrows coming out of a headdress when they made that change, right? So researching what their motions had been, what process they had gone through. So there was nothing on the piece of paper that was, that was distributed prior, you know, just prior to the meeting that was unexpected. I didn't know the language, but I, there was nothing on that piece of paper that was unexpected. I think the question I have at the bigger picture is, is if we have questions around as a committee, we did this a couple of years ago with, during COVID, again, in understanding what ways we should be responding to open public comment. And I don't know if it was Dorothy, no, was it, who was, I forget who it was that came in and helped us.
It would have been Dorothy.
But if we have questions around what constitutes appropriate deliberation, which is allowed between meetings, among, with the chair and a committee member, you know, versus what constitutes deliberation with a quorum, or deliberation on a topic versus process, which are two different things? You know, I had questions about process, what were we actually going to be doing at the meeting, which is an appropriate question to ask and doesn't need to be asked in part of an open public comment, excuse me, as part of an open meeting. If I'm, if I am to call you and say, what, what are we, what is the decision, or what is the process going to be, what does that look like? That's not about the content, that's about the process. Perfectly appropriate. But it may be an opportunity for all of us to just get clarity as a committee on what that fine line is between appropriate deliberation or appropriate discussion amongst, you know, two individual members of the committee, and what actually should be reserved for conversation or discussion that happens at a, at a public meeting. I don't know what the scheduling would look like for that, but I, that may, this may be an opportunity, just again, it's always been a slightly gray area, maybe it shouldn't be, or maybe it should be less gray, but maybe this is an opportunity to do that.
Well, thanks, thanks for that. I think that's well said, and I think that could be also part of our response as a committee to all, for all five of these, you know, our reflective, our reflective work as a board.
I think that'd be nice.
I think it'd be good.
You want to bring up the next one?
Yeah.
I'm going, I mean, I'm looking, I'm hopping between them. I was going to go with things filed under the broad term intimidation tactics. Is that okay, can I?
Sure.
It's okay if I bring that one up?
Whatever your thoughts are for our response.
Sure. Speaking only for me, I did not feel at all intimidated by you, Mr. Pearson, Chair. In fact, I wasn't frankly paying enough attention to you, truly, because I was, I was absorbing the question, sorry, not speaking, I was, for my part, I was absorbing the questions that Ms. Thaxton had, and one of the points that Ms. Ladoni had brought up in trying to understand them further. And so I think I, my mind was not working at regular speed, and I was fixated very much on some of the questions that you had, Michelle, and, because I was interested in them and wanted to hear more, to the point where when you went to call for the vote, in my own head, I was like, yeah, I'm not ready. So I literally didn't say anything, which is not the right response. So I should have, so that's my fault, Mr. Chair, for causing any image of confusion there. I wasn't stymied or intimidated. I had earlier in that week, very recently decided how I was going to vote, given different scenarios, and in the scenario of the motion two that you put out, Mr. Pearson, I knew I was going to vote, but I was still caught on seeing if we were going to have any amendments that members wanted or clarification. So that was, that's just speaking for myself. And again, sorry, I didn't respond right away. It wasn't an indication of a vote or non-vote, I was literally fixated on something else. So.
Just good. Thank you.
No, no problem.
In that third one, and also the fourth one, there is a comment that's very specific to me, in my professional role as Associate Executive Director of the MIA and the MSAA. So I can offer anything, we can add it to the response, but when I ran for this position, I immediately called the Ethics Commission and had very clear guidelines from the Ethics Commission, of which you all know what I do, is I have to step out during the budget discussions.
Yes.
I can, I can add to my position for clarity for all of you on the committee, if you didn't know, but anyone else, that I'm actually not a decision maker for the MIA or the MSA, I work for them. They are both separate 501(c)(3) corporations run by a Board of Directors.
Yeah.
And the decision makers are all the people elected to the Board, and that is not me. I happen to be one of the workers in the Office, so I work for the Board of Directors. So I actually don't have decision-making voting power with the MIA, but I had checked that with the Ethics Commission.
Okay.
And also recently, in the past six months, a member of the community in Foxborough did, did file a complaint, or not a complaint, an intake of a question to the Ethics Commission.
Yes.
And that person, I think, I think they filed a complaint, and I know that they received a confirmation from the Ethics Commission that there was nothing found.
Yeah.
So I know that was mentioned in both the third and fourth, but I can answer that I know the Ethics Commission has responded, that there is nothing there for my conflict of interest, and I've always been very cautious with that. And that came back in the second one as well.
I think my one, I think in general, the response is going to be like I started at the beginning. We appreciate people are watching. My personal wish is that they would pay more attention to things that are bigger issues than this.
Yeah.
That's an editorial. We can always get better at what we do, so we appreciate the feedback. We also will expect anyone attending these meetings going forward, that they also do better at what they do. These are business meetings. We should have been more firm with the audience that was not participating in the way that it's expected, that that behavior was not going to be tolerated. And that would be one of the things that I think we should also include in our response, is that we will uphold ourselves to the standards that our community expects us to hold, but we also expect our community to uphold those same standards about the way that they should be participating in these meetings.
Thank you.
Rob, sorry, Van.
Yes.
I appreciate that, Rob. Yeah, that was, I was, and it wasn't obviously everyone, there was a few folks who were watching the meeting who were, their behavior was a tad embarrassing and disappointing, in that they weren't acting like adults or people close to being adults, in terms of some of the things that they were yelling across that didn't necessarily get picked up on the mic. So. It's unnecessary and unbecoming of everyone I respect in the community, whether I agree with them or not, so.
I have a logistical question.
Sure.
There's five complaints, and there's different names on all the complaints, different complainants, and different people named. Do we have to reply to all of them as a board, or each individual one that has someone named? That's like a, just a-
No, it's all good, it's good. My understanding is that each one needs to be replied to. I think someone who writes well and understands the whole dynamics of open meeting law would be best, and I think our counsel would probably be well-suited to help guide, guide answers, and I think we could task counsel if you guys would like, or we could task another writer, it can be anyone. And this is, this is really a very helpful document, the front page of this was super helpful. It says crystal clear that the body must send the Attorney General a copy of the response, as well as the people, which makes sense to me. And they may delegate the responsibility to its counsel or a staff member, but only after it is met to review the complaint, which is the value, and this is very much the importance of our meeting tonight, and this time together tonight. So I think, you know, at the conclusion of our deliberation about this and our discussion about this, we could, you know, come to an agreement of how best to task it out, to make sure that we follow what is specified here, which is a response within the deadlines, which is, I think, critical. Does that make sense? That-
Fair enough, yeah, we have to respond.
Absolutely.
I just didn't know if it needed to be by the entire committee for all five, or if we had to personally respond.
Yeah, my, my understanding of this writing, and Dr. Berdus, I don't know if you've got any clarity for that.
Public body.
The public body responds as a single unit.
The school committee responds.
That's what I thought, that's what I, that's what I understand, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Because we exist as a body.
Yes.
If that's the case, then I would, and I'll set aside the issue of who writes it. I'd love for us all, we all should look at it and add, offer additions or subtractions or things that we disagree with before they get sent out.
So we'll have to, yeah, say how to do it, because we do have deadlines for it. So, yeah, I think we do have deadlines, so.
I think we have two weeks.
I might suggest, well, we have two weeks from when filed, right?
Yes.
14 business days from when they send.
Yep.
Right. I might suggest to, would it benefit us to get as much out tonight as we can, so that we can task it out to be completed, get our ideas on the table tonight? I, I'm, I, would we have to, we don't want to deliberate, we want to have another meeting about it, right?
It would be helpful to me, and I apologize, I tried to do this research beforehand, and I just ran out of time. It would be helpful to me to see what format responses have taken when complaints like this have been filed in the past. We have a tendency as a committee to go into way too much detail. And I'm not sure what is appropriate for a response. So before we start authoring a response, I would love to see, if possible, examples either from our counsel or from, I don't know if anyone, I don't know what other resources might be available, as to what an appropriate type of response looks like. The last thing I would think we would want to get into is a line-by-line, bullet-by-bullet, tit-for-tat type of response. Just doesn't, it's not useful for us, not useful necessarily for the community. So that would be my one request.
Would there be any interest in seeing if counsel, tasking that to counsel? And I would think that they might be prepared, but I don't know.
I was going to suggest that. If, if folks, if in our deliberations here, we can say, hey, and I think we've already started, maybe we haven't been, but on the different aspects, if there's things that committee members would like to see added to it, we can get that out in this format now, here. And, and then, see if counsel has time to tack that together, making sure that we're actually hitting all the points that we're supposed to hit with, in the format that the, that the AG wants.
Any further comments on the, on the five items? Any more detail on the five? Any interest in a motion to have counsel respond on behalf of the body, accordingly to the Attorney General and the people listed as the complaint in the complaint inform?
Sure, I can take a stab at it.
Say it again.
I can take a stab at it?
Sure.
Fine, then, and then fix my motion if it's not right, y'all, please. I move that the school committee direct counsel to draft responses to each of the five complaints offered here, incorporating the compiled opinions of school committee members as part of the response, and doing so in a way that addresses everything being requested of us.
Is there a second for that? Is that a motion?
I'm sorry, Sarah.
Yeah, I was, that was a motion.
We have to second.
No, no, I think he has to add that it's regarding the open public meeting complaints. I think that you omitted that, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, I thought that was implicit.
Sorry.
Regarding, regarding the open meeting, the five open meeting complaints that were filed, because I just said five that were filed, thank you, Ms. Ladoni.
Thank you, good idea.
I just wanted to say that.
I will second that.
That's why Seth, fix it.
So we have Mr. Canfield that has passed, made the motion to have counsel draft on-
Mr. Rutter.
Mr. Rutter, to draft based on these five open meeting law complaints. Mr. Canfield has second.
Yes.
Are there any further discussions?
No. I'm all set with discussions.
Seeing none and hearing none, all in favor of Mr. Rutter's motion to have counsel draft responses to the five open meeting law complaints. Five zero hand vote, thank you very much. Thank you all for your time discussing this, very valuable to us, very valuable to our body.
It is.
Thank you. And thank you for all the patience of the people waiting to speak as well. Next on the agenda is superintendent's update, Dr. Berdus.
So I will start with the donation drive that took place this weekend with One Foxborough, all of the different organizations that came together was highly successful. There were over 250 cars that came through the Ahearn Circle Drive in order to drop off the donations, which was such a wonderful turnout from our community, not surprising at all. And with all of the volunteers that were there to assist with our members from the Y as well to be able to sort that, they actually had turned cars away because there were so many donations. And when I had sent out the reminder, I had made the note in there with some of the, some of the other specific needs that were needed, such as diapers and hygiene products, and people just really came out and were so generous. And the donations were, they were heartfelt, it just, it was just a wonderful showing of this very supportive community. They're now going to take all of those items, and they are sorting them based on needs to make sure that individuals get what they need from all of those. And so that will be kind of packaged together, and the National Guard is actually going to be helping with that as well. So again, just wonderful thank you to this community and all that they did with the donations.
Okay, a follow-up. Can you remind us the different groups that have come together that are part of that One Foxborough? Not all, but I mean, just, it's a collective, right?
It's a collective group.
It's not Foxborough Public Schools?
No, we were just one, and one small piece. I mean, with the YMCA and all of the different town organizations, from all of the human resource departments of the town, it, it really was, it was everyone. I am afraid if I started listing some, that I would, I would forget some, but it was on the communication that went out. And it really was just an extraordinary effort of everyone pulling together, and to be able to have that many people driving through and dropping off items, but then that many people receiving the items on the, on the other end. So, you know, I will also say Mark Craig, our Director of Human Resources, he did a fantastic job of being the, kind of the organizer, I think, with, and he will tell you, he had a team as well, but he, a lot of organization on his part, so he really did a fantastic job, along with so many others. As far as other events that are coming up, we have an event coming up this weekend, which is a new event for Foxborough, which is- which is a new event for Foxborough, which is the Foxborough Athletics Hall of Fame, which is something that is very new for us. Other communities have had that. It's the induction ceremony that will take place at the Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center on Saturday at 7:00 PM. And that, I'm just going to read for you what the, the purpose of the Athletic Hall of Fame is because we've got a very special group of people and athletes that are going to be inducted into the Hall of Fame on Saturday. It is, the purpose is to preserve our athletic history. The Foxborough High School Athletics Hall of Fame is being established in 2023, so as of this year. It is organized to recognize the rich tradition of athletic success at Foxborough High School. It serves as a means of honoring and recognizing the athletes, teams, coaches, administrators and supporters who made significant contributions to the Warriors' tradition of excellence. The Athletic Hall of Fame intends to honor the contributions and the accomplishments of these individuals and teams who are worthy of recognition as examples for others to emulate. So when we think of those, and it's, it's out there, it's not, it's not a secret that will be inducted in. I'd just like to congratulate Joni Goodwin. So many of you have seen her at over 70 years' worth of events. Joe Heinrecker, who was, you know, a very special person educator and friend to all of us here. His, his wife Sharon will be attending for him as he is recognized. Bobby Morsehead, a 1973 graduate of Foxborough High School, who was a three-sport standout. Thomas Nayland is not going to be able to attend, but he graduated in 89 and excelled at many different teams and then went on to play for that, actually, the Denver Broncos later on. Sarah Bain, an 89 graduate as well, again, three-sport standout. And what she accomplished, quite amazing. And you'll hear all of this if you're there as far as their bios, if you will. And then the 1987 soccer team, girls' soccer team as a team. And there will be many members from that team that will be in attendance as well Saturday night. So the first induction is very exciting. There was a Hall of Fame Executive Committee, which consisted of Joe Cusack, Lisa Down, she'll actually, Lisa will be doing the introductions on Saturday, Todd Kizer, Billy Ivets and Tom Ryan. And they'll talk about the nomination process and all that went involved. But it's been a very thoughtful process and the inductees quite well deserving. And it's an exciting time to be able to see them recognized.
That's exciting.
Yes.
It's great.
So I'm looking forward to that. We have other events coming up. Open house for seventh and eighth grade at the high school. We have a first concert coming up next week. We had a great turnout for the flu clinic that took place on Friday. It was actually our biggest yet. We had 154 flu shots that were administered. And they're bringing back another one in the next couple of weeks, planning. So that date will be announced. And then just an other update as far as our newcomers. Governor Healy announced yesterday that at the end of the, at the end of October, that the state will no longer be adding additional units for emergency shelter systems. I can tell you the hotel that is housing our newcomers in Foxborough has filled. And so our registration for students, we have another registration, we've been doing that on Thursdays. But at this time, our total is at 49 students that we've enrolled. I think that it's also important to, to bring back, we know that the state is funding and providing the assistance here when it comes to staffing and resources. And as a result of these 49 newcomers, we have hired five new staff. And that's two English language learner teachers. It's a kindergarten teacher and an educational assistant to go in that kindergarten classroom. And then also another educational assistant to support. We've also increased the, the FTE, the full-time equivalent of two staff, to be able to increase support. And that's one of our Spanish teachers and then also our wellness teachers. By adding on an additional kindergarten class, the specials, music, art, wellness, that increases when they have those. So we needed to increase an FTE in order to do that. But again, that is state funded based on what we'll be receiving for our newcomers. The other thing that I just wanted to end with, with an update is, is really, I just wanted to make a mention as far as the attack in Israel here. And that, it's inconprehensible of what's taking place around the globe. We understand faculty and staff and students and families are struggling and some living in fear of what is taking place and happening abroad. We understand that they're worried about their safety and the, and the trauma of these events, particularly for our Jewish families. And so I just want to remind families and everyone that we have resources within the school and that we have wonderful guidance and adjustment counselors and mental health teams that are there that if we can be of support, to please reach out. We've also shared with principals and with guidance counselors, other resources that could be helpful, that can be accessed either through your guidance counselor or also just by going on and searching them as far as yourself. So as an example, three of the resources are How to Talk to Your Children About Conflict and War by UNICEF. There's also How to Talk to Kids About Violence, Crime and War, which is through Common Sense Media, which is an outlet that we use for many things. They have so many wonderful resources for parents. And then Tips for Parents and Educators in Talking to Your Children About Violence. So it's an infographic out of the National Association for School Psychologists that's there. So again, we've, we've talked with some families and supporting students, but if there are other things that we can do as far as providing that resource, to please reach out.
That's it? Is that it?
Any questions?
I have no questions, but I just want to, I, you said the hotel's full, right? And now, so it's not, it's not the end of what we're going to do to help integrate people to our school community. But I just wanted to make sure I, I personally want to thank you for your leadership, Stephanie. And Mr. Yukna has the, you're a leadership team that does your job and shows up a lot. But your leadership has been profound in this. I spoke to you weekly, if not every two or three days about this. You kept, you helped keep me informed. I know you were back and forth to the hotel personally, maybe all of you were, and your entire team. So really made a big difference with a very unique situation that was put on our plate in this town, in this community to, to build success, stability amongst an unpredicted thing. So thank you all. Thank you, at least the three of you for guiding. And, and all the principals in the back, too. We can't forget any of the principals. You're here to get it. But, but, but your leadership team, thank you very, very much. To, to create the stability and the ability to manage that. Not simple as a school year starts, not simple at all.
No, and thank you for that. The, the teachers and classrooms. I think the display that you saw from our students at the middle school and, and the benefits, the rich benefits that they're receiving for many of our newcomers, whether they're part of this. But it has been an extraordinary amount of work for our teachers, for our English language learner teachers and supporting our general education teachers. And then for the principals and all that they're doing to support their teachers and their building and their families.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Really. Thanks. Yes.
I was also going to say, I'm so glad they're doing the Athletic Hall of Fame. My, my high school started it about five years ago. And they've had the best, like, it's been the best, like, reflection and community building thing. See these teams come back and people that I graduated with. I'm not in danger of getting named to it. Like, ever. But it's, I just, I love that people put the time in to do it because it's just, it's, it's just, it's really wonderful to be able to have the community focusing on the depth and, and longevity within the community. So that's it. Thanks to the people who put it together.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Nathan, we have the student report.
I just have one announcement from Dr. Dunham. The high school weight room renovations have been ongoing since last spring when we upgraded all of our cardio equipment and was completed Monday with the installation of the universal racks. This project was led by the athletic department, our athletic training staff, our strength coaches and the PE department. And the goal is to update the space to meet the requirements of these diverse programs. The equipment that was replaced had reached the end of its expected lifespan, much of which had been donated by the YMCA. This would not have been possible with the help of Mr. Yukna and our facility staff, who are incredible throughout this project and managing all of the details. The goal in the coming year is to dramatically increase the usage of this space by all of our athletic teams and to have a dedicated rehab area for students working to back, get back on the court. That's it.
How, thank you. What's, what's left? It's, we're done. It's, it's, it's all operational. That's awesome. Okay.
I saw it today. It looks fantastic.
Is it being used, Nate? Just making sure.
Sure. Thanks. Thank you. And thank you, Nathan, for your report. Appreciate it.
No vacations coming up.
Next on our agenda is our elementary school improvement plans. Our principals have been sitting in the back very quietly. Thank you for your patience. We really greatly appreciate it.
Great.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair and school committee members. As always, thank you for, for having us this evening. We greatly enjoy having the opportunity to speak in front of you, especially about these things that we are so proud of and our work together and our work with the school council, our work with the school community. Excuse me. Last year, our school improvement plans were mostly new. Ms. Morrissey and I, coming into the positions new, and Mr. Stanton being in the position, we formed a, a strong team together. We wanted to create unity in our schools and our plans. And we came together to create what I believe, what I believed at the time and what I still believe, were very strong, realistic and lofty plans. We fulfilled a lot of the, the parts of our plans. But we, you know, despite making progress, we kept some of the benchmarks in our current plans as we continue to work on some of those benchmarks and new initiatives. In the creation of our plans, we, we always start with our school council. We each have a school council in our buildings. Together, we come together with them to, to review school culture and climate data, MCAS data, assessment data from our benchmark assessments in math, ELA and social emotional learning from our panorama survey for students. All that data works together to inform our plans and create something that works for our schools. We are very proud of the plans. We do recognize and celebrate the differences in our plans, but we all also recognize and celebrate the similarities in our plans. Again, like I said, as we try to create that unity among the three schools and we work together as an administrative elementary team to make sure that we're creating plans that are well received within the school and really taking into account the great resources that we have and how we can use them to enhance our community and make the lives of our students, faculty, families better every day. So our, our plan is broken into four pillars. It mirrors the, the district plan for success in that way. And we are very proud, too, for how, how well it's tied to that plan. I'll start with pillar one. Pillar one is facilities and infrastructure. The strategic objective is to provide a safe and secure, supportive, responsive and innovative learning environment for all students and staff. Some of these benchmarks look similar to what we did last year, and there's a couple of new ones. Our first benchmark is to implement junior police academy for K to one students. This is something that Taylor School was doing last year. And Igo and Burl are going to start this initiative this year. It capitalizes on our strong relationship with the Foxborough Police Department. They are a strong presence in our school. We have a great relationship with them. We're bringing that relationship into the school all the time. I know that personally, the Burl has a, a presentation with the, the police department next week for our kindergarten and first grade students about bus and pedestrian safety. So in addition to those sporadic events throughout the year, we're beginning this program, this junior police academy for our K to one students in order to be able to teach them about police education, fitness and community service. We are also dedicated to creating sensory pathways and regulation stations in the school. I was working with our school psychologists and our, our OT and our PT at the Burl today as they installed our sixth station in the school, four of which have been added this year. The one that they were installing today was between second grade and preschool. And it offered an opportunity for our preschool students, as well as our second grade students, to have another place to be able to take a break, to be able to use some of those regulation strategies that they've learned through their social emotional learning lessons throughout the year and put those into practice independently. We are also collaborating with school and community organizations to assist in creating outdoor learning spaces. This has been something that was a strong initiative of the school councils last year. And we've collaborated with interested faculty in the buildings. And the PTO has provided us with some generous funding to be able to make these a reality. We started small, but we're continuing to grow and explore the addition of these outdoor learning spaces for our students.
And pillar two is about teaching, learning and pedagogy. And it's to provide opportunities for educators to collaborate and create common equitable learning experiences. And for, as principals, oftentimes we, we're looking to remove barriers. And what's exciting about the school council is to have different perspectives and voices. And as Robert shared, you know, we have a wealth of data, but to have that sort of human element, to be able to sort of translate it. And, you know, data, the numbers is a story. And each school, we really work hard for across the district where we can be united and have, you know, realizing that we're feeding into the, the Ahearn Middle School. But we each have our unique strengths, challenges and our fingerprints. And so as Robert was sharing, you know, it, it's nice because I learned so much from the two of them and actually our school councils as well. We're constantly sharing ideas and growing off of one another. And so for tier, excuse me, for pillar two, our first goal across the district is really to continue to develop and strengthen our multi-system of supports, MTSS. And I know that you've heard that term a lot. For me, what it translates to, it's what's best for the whole child. We look at our tiered supports academically, but also behaviorally and socially and emotionally as well. Something that's come this year is we're looking to continue to look at our co-teaching and our inclusion model. But also what resources that we have in place for our staff so they can best do their job. It, it's wonderful because we have our, our PTOs and our families continue to, to assist us with opportunities. As principals, our, our biggest part is last year, remember, we had the English Language Arts, the ELA curriculum review, which is an enormous undertaking. And so for that, as Robert was sharing, some of these goals are continuing. So that's a, a pillar within this that we are continuing with that. Something that's been a highlight across the district has been the Empowering Writers Program. We have tremendous feedback from the teachers and the families, but most of all, our authors, our student authors and really just what they're able to do. And, and we're fortunate, we get to go into the classrooms and we get to, to visit and see the snapshots and see this actually take root and see it comes word to become into reality. Something else that we're looking to do this year, and we've, we've had pockets of it, but across the district, we're trying to strengthen it, they're implementing enrichment and intervention blocks. We call those win blocks, what I need. And that's something that actually the Department of Education is promoting that districts and schools at the school level actually put into place. So we're proud that we've been able to create some structures and some resources to be able to leverage our staff and the schedules, the master schedules that actually allow this up to every single day in certain grade levels. So what that entails is the teachers still have their, their main lessons that they're teaching throughout the day. But it could be 30 minutes that there's no new instruction and each child in that classroom is getting exactly what they need. And as a principal, I, and, you know, we're excited about, is it's not just about the intervention. This is designed for extension and enrichment. And so we're truly, when we sort of build these plans, we think of our utopia. What can we put in place that can impact as many students or ideally all students? And so this win block, this what I need, is something that promotes collaboration between teachers that if the three of us are on one team and we look at our data, we look at the, how the students do, maybe the students from their two classes come to my class and I can extend and enrich. Some other students are right at grade level, but they need to solidify some understanding or some students are approaching. And so what we're finding is that our teacher teams, including, and we're losing the labels, not only for our students, but the teachers as well, special education student, teachers work with all students. They don't have to have an IEP. Our classroom teachers work with all students, our literacy and math specialists as well. So it's exciting for us to actually be able to put in this opportunity for our teachers to have the structure within the school day to, to reach students that they haven't been able to do so at this level before. Something else new this year is common planning time. We have always been envious at the, at least I've been envious of the Ahearn Middle School where they have it within the school day. And we've been very creative with our PLCs that we've designed at each of the schools. Each team meets before school and we have coverage from our specialists that goes right into their first period. So we're not looking for any additional staffing. But we also were able to design the master schedule that significantly increased the daily time of classroom, excuse my, grade level teams, including special educators, that they can come together and discuss. that they can come together and discuss their lessons. We've also incorporated online lesson planning, and so all of a sudden now, it's not so much conversations in the hallway, or you have to wait and sort of get a hard copy, it's web-based, and they can do it at home, they can share. So, it's really been fantastic to see this next level of collaboration, which, once again, research supports for student achievement. And just finally, we're continuing to try to strengthen and perfect our support teams, our student support teams, and that's when students may be struggling, but also, too, once again, that enrichment piece. So, hopefully, you see a common theme. These may seem separate, but they're all woven together, and actually, all four pillars as well.
Excellent. Our next pillar is well-being. The strategic objective for well-being is to provide the necessary supports to ensure healthy minds and healthy bodies for all members of the school committee. In order to meet this strategic objective, we have process benchmarks, and the first one is to implement whole class and small group and individual panorama and second-step lessons. So, panorama is our universal screener for social emotional learning, and it provides feedback for our classroom teachers, for our counselors, for our mental health team, and for our administrative team, to be able to track mental health concerns in social emotional learning for our students, to give them the targeted support that they need depending on where they're at. So, whether they're in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, all the way up through, they use it all the way up through high school, I think. So, panorama provides a really great assessment tool for their social emotional learning. It's something that we started using last year. It worked really, really well. We incorporated that also into our PLC SST cycle in the morning, so we're evaluating not only where students are at as far as their academic skills, but where they're at as far as their social emotional skills and how we respond to that. This year, classroom teachers have been able to respond through providing second-step lessons. Second step is a great curriculum program that we have to be able to provide those targeted supports depending on the results of those panorama surveys. And teachers have been supported by our mental health team in doing that because it is a new initiative. Second, we're continuing to offer all grade levels facilitated recess activities, clubs, and focusing on the development of student interest. Yesterday afternoon, I was outside at kindergarten recess, and there were two adults who were supposed to be on duty, and I looked around, and it was myself and six adults outside. I can feel this working every day in the school. I can feel people going above and beyond their prescribed responsibilities in the school to be able to provide our students with an excellent experience and really promote those core values everywhere, including recess. This also happens outside of school, after-school hours. Each of the schools provides an after-school program, so at Burrell, it's called BEEP, and this is an after-school program that is organized and partially funded through our PTO. It helps students to be able to get extracurricular activities that are accessible and with their peers as well in the school setting with people who they're familiar with, and that's been a very successful, long-running program. We're actually continuing to do that this year, and we're expanding our schedule to add an additional two weeks onto it because it's been so popular. We are collaborating as grade-level teams to identify and address general and specific social emotional needs within the classrooms and grade levels. Like Mr. Stanton spoke about, those morning meetings, those PLC meetings are a time for teachers to get together with their grade-level teams in combination with the increased common planning time and really create alignment among the grade-level teachers and among the entire body of teachers in the school for fulfilling the variety of social emotional needs that exist.
Okay, and I have pillar four, which is diversity, equity, and inclusion, and our strategic objective there is to foster and strengthen the respect and actions of staff, students, and families to celebrate diversity, ensure equity, and practice universal inclusion. I want to refer back to what Mr. Stanton said a minute ago about the win block for our students. We also give our adults what they need and what I need today are my notes, unlike my colleagues, so I'm just going to share from my notes, okay? As you know, last year, the DEI committee members conducted focus groups with students in fourth grade through 12th grade to gain a better understanding of our students' experiences within the Foxborough Public Schools. We were particularly interested in learning more about their sense of belonging, if they felt like they were supported and valued members of their school community. And so, as a result of this work, the three schools, the BIT schools, are committed to working with our ILTs and our school councils to provide opportunities for more inclusive practices at each school. As a result of looking at this data from the survey, not all of our students district-wide are feeling fully included or fully accepted or valued, so we want to come up with activities and things to help support students within our schools. Additionally, last year, the DEI committee members participated in learning equity walks where we assessed visual representations of diverse students' groups as well as the physical environment through an equity lens. As a BIT admin team, we are going to conduct similar learning walks through the three elementary schools, and we're going to make sure that we are aligned in terms of expectations, materials, and overall best practices. And then additionally, at the start of this school year, all of elementary staff were given a list of religious holiday and religious observances that represent our diverse communities and the populations in front of us in an order, in an order or in an attempt to honor and celebrate all the diversity that we have in each of our individual schools. And then lastly, the three schools are going to take part in Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. So, over the coming weeks, students will explore Ruby's impact in her vision of creating positive change within the community. As you know, on November 14, 1960, she took historic steps to initiate the desegregation of the New Orleans Public Schools. And so, Burrell, IGO, and Taylor are going to host the Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day on November 14 to honor her and to make a positive difference one step at a time. Nice.
Any questions for our plans?
Mr. Rutter?
Going back to pillar two. Because I'm, well, it's all fascinating, but in terms of the master's schedule, what, how'd you do it? No. How, what were some of the roadblocks that you saw and ways that you're going around it? Because I've heard this for years from not, just elementary in general, that it's challenging.
I would say for at the Taylor School, the difference was the co-teaching model. Because in the past, special education and the service providers, we had to sort of balance if the special educator was, you know, needed to be in two grade levels. So, this has allowed us to be able to align with one special educator mostly in each grade level. And also having the co-talk classrooms. Also, we had a very small increase with Spanish due to additional classrooms that we had due to our growing enrollment, and what that did is at the Taylor School, it allowed us to offer Spanish just in that one afternoon block, and that freed up everything. So, our teachers in grades one through four have the same prep period all six days of the cycle, and in kindergarten, they have it three times. I've never been able to do that as a principal. So, it's some of those sort of byproducts of some of our other initiatives that we, when we work together and we share ideas, like, oh, this is happening at the IGO, this is happening at the Burrell, what can I do at the Taylor to try to improve things?
I'll add just one more thing. One of the mistakes that I've made in the past, before I came to Foxborough, but also last year, was making, making the master schedule by myself, right? In a silo, just thinking that I kind of knew what was best for, for teaching and learning in the building. I recognized that that was not the best way, right? There are people working in the school who we can utilize, put our minds together, and really come up with a schedule that works best for everyone. That's what we did this summer. We utilized our instructional leadership teams to be able to provide input and feedback on the schedules. In my opinion, that made all the difference. I mean, you know, I don't, I don't think of myself as someone who's going to make the best schedule by myself, and realizing that, recognizing that, and overcoming that was, was really impactful for the schedules, I think.
And at IGO, we had a schedule committee, and they sought feedback from their grade-level team members to see what worked best for them and, you know, what they might want to see incorporated in their schedule.
Nice. Follow-up to that, if things continue to go to plan here, what, how often are you looking at being able to make win block occur?
So, at the Taylor School, right now, we have it every day for 30 minutes across each grade. So, for example, what that looks like in kindergarten, and this is our, we're fortunate due to the budget that you support and provide us. I have 10 adults during that half hour. It's a half hour before lunch. So, I have the three teachers, the three assistants, two literacy specialists, a special education teacher, and the school counselor who's available during that. So, if we had, for example, for the school counselor, if we had three students in three different classrooms and their families were going through a divorce, in the past, she might have to pull them differently. Now, she can pull them together. It maximizes her time, but more so, the students know that they're with someone else, and they're able to share, and the impact on what we're able, what our teachers and councils are able to do is nice. And once again, for us to be able to look at the data and be able to sort of target, and my biggest hope for this is that, once again, all students, because a lot of times we focus our resources on the interventions and the supports that we need, but we want to make sure every child's getting what they need, and that enrichment and extension learning opportunity is something that we're excited about.
I applaud that. I've never heard that in the win block that, you know, and that's, that's a really lovely and should be unsurprising way for me to, that you all are thinking about it. So, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Canfield?
Just, it's really two comments. The first is, we hear this at every meeting, you guys have said it several times during your presentation this evening, but it is not just your job, it is not just our job, and it's not just the administration's job. The work that's here that goes into the plan for success for the district and for your schools is the work that you guys put in, your, 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 your community puts in, so the parents, the school council, your instructional leads, all the other people in the building put these plans together because that's what it takes to make a successful school, right? And for our students to find success. So, thank you for just underscoring how important everybody working together is to achieve common goals. The second, and I think I just want to call it out one more time, we do want to thank all those people on the school, on the individual school councils, the community members, the parents, the three of you, the teacher representatives for, because we know this takes a lot of time to put this together and to be thoughtful. So, thanks, just on television, I guess, thank you all for your work in putting this together because it is, it's working. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Worth. You mentioned you have six regulation stations in school. What do those look like? What exactly are those?
So, one of the regulation-
I mean, I get an idea what they are. I'm sorry, just one.
Yeah, so that's a great question. So, sensory pathways are typically on the floor. Regulation stations can be partially on the floor, but they also sometimes have a wall component. The regulation station that we were installing today had a hand-pressed component on it, so it was right outside the classroom. It was, I was walking by it, and my initial reaction, as someone who works in a school every day with children, was wow, those handprints are really low to the ground on the wall. And then I corrected myself and reminded myself that they're for preschoolers. So, they were almost like floor level. So, that, that created that hand component. As students get older, sometimes they become more complicated, like with, with specific directions about how to use them, but at the most basic level, they're just a chance for students to be able to practice self-regulation skills that they're learning in those social emotional lessons, and, and to be able to, you know, take breaks as needed throughout the day if, if that's something that, you know, their, their program allows for.
So, if they're overwhelmed, they can leave the room to, and decompress themselves in the seat? I think that's great.
Yeah, some of them are right in the room, or they're in our group spaces, too, so they're right there. One of them is right outside the room, so it's visible from where the teacher's vantage point is. So, specifically, like when we're installing them, we have the flexibility to be able to give students what they need.
And I think part of that is we're connecting it to their social emotional well-being, as Robert shared, with the zones of regulation. And what we're trying to have students to be able to do, and this is a lifelong skill, is to understand your feeling and find a healthy strategy to be able to regulate yourself. We talk about the green zone as the learning zone where you want to be, but sometimes children are in the blue zone, they're tired, or they're sick. They're in the yellow zone, they're feeling silly or frustrated, or the red zone is they're angry. And so, what we've done, occupational therapists, our speech pathologists, classroom teachers have come together to have strategy cards in these stations as well. At the Taylor School, we have two exercise bikes and a hula hoop and jump rope. You know, as adults, we get to leave our desk and get a cup of coffee, go to the water cooler. Students very rarely do. So, we've had classroom teachers across our three schools 100% buy-in, and if a student says, I need to use a regulation station, they go to it. They, we had two students, it was like they were in the Tour de France today. They were on the bike, and they were just pedaling along. Mrs. Bayek, our secretary, set the timer, three minutes, they go back to class, and they're ready to learn again. And so, it really takes all, it's an entire school effort, and we've learned from each other across the district. We've shared some resources, our occupational therapist, Mr. Michael Lasik, our director of student services, has been wonderful in supporting us with resources and ideas as well.
Thank you. I love that we aren't developing just students, we're developing like whole people here, like we're looking at the whole person. I love this. Thank you.
Now, I just love your collaboration, teamwork, mutual respect. I feel like it results in such a wonderful elementary environment across the board in Foxborough, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for explanation and everything. The panorama, I was going to ask about the second step, it said pan-ram and panorama and second step, but you explained it well, so thank you. Check-in, check-out. I noticed that in the IGO. There was a check-in, check-out, was a little different than the other ones. I didn't know what that was.
Yep. It was actually in there last year as well, but we ended up having SEL after-school club instead. So, what it will be is just, it's CHICO, so it's check-in, check-out. So, it will be opportunities for students to have additional touchpoints with adults throughout the day. So, if I'm a third-grade teacher and my, one of my former students is in fourth grade, they may have the opportunity, if they're having, you know, a tough morning or a tough afternoon, to come in and check out, check in and check out with me. Check-in would be in the beginning of the day, and the check-out would be at the end of the day. It's just a way and an opportunity for kids to know that even though you might not be in my current class, you're still part of my community, you're still loved, and you can always come and count on me throughout the day and throughout the years.
Thanks. Yeah, that's very good. Well, thank, thank, we do got to take action on these, right, as well, but thank you all for your presentations, and my takeaway, even with you just, just said on the check-in, check-out, is such this broad attention to all the structures we've put in place to help students be ready to learn at their place and their time when they arrive in the building. I mean, and if people pay attention, there's just so much that goes into that, all these little different these puzzles. So, just thank you for that, that in-depth work there. Thank you very much. Do we motion them each one separately probably, or together?
I mean, can we just do elementary school improvement plan across the board? Like to me.
So, we've done that previously, so I motion that we accept the elementary school improvement plans as presented this evening by Ms. Morrissey, Mr. Worth, and Mr. Stanton.
For the year 2023, 2024.
Thank you. For the year 2023, 2024.
I second the motion.
Second. Mr. Canfield made the motion for the improvement plan, seconded by Michelle Stackston, and any further discussion? All in favor? Five-zero vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your support.
Good evening. Thank you. Culture and climate survey.
All right, so let me ask you first what your preference is. Stephanie and I have gone through to highlight different slides, but there's still a lot of slides that you have there. I also am recognizing the time, so we can go with what we had planned unless you would prefer that you ask us questions based on what you've seen in the presentation. So, what is your preference?
What is your preference?
Yeah, what is your preference, committee? I mean, committee members, what's your preference? I have some highlights that I can attend to, but I'm-
So, personally, I love this. I read it. I would love to go with your plan, and then if there are things that we feel like weren't covered, then we could ask those, but I'd love to know what you guys want us to know more about more than, I have other questions, I know where to go, so.
On that, can I ask a follow-up? Is your preference for questions at the end or as they come with the sections we're in?
However you want to do questions, we are good either way.
What's your preference?
End.
End? Yeah, I like it. I like it. And is end okay with everyone? Everyone good with end? Yeah, we'll go to the end, so.
Okay.
Let them do their thing, and then we'll go for the end and see where it takes us.
Okay. So, just to, to remind for those that are listening at home, this is a survey that we've administered for the last 11 years. It is administered to faculty and staff, meaning our educational assistants and any of our service providers, professional staff as well. It is administered to faculty and staff, meaning our educational assistants and any of our service providers, professional staff as well. It is also administered to parents, pre-K to 12, as well as students in grades five through 12. So each year we look at our attendant, our participation, rather, and what that looks like. There's one typo on your memo where it says that the student survey participation declined by 25%. That's actually the parent participation that declined by 25%. We have control over the students' participation because they're taking the survey in class. So I don't know if any, if you, if that stood out to you or not, but. And then interestingly, one of the slides too, you'll see, we look at parent participation and that this is the lowest participation that we've had in the last, I'll say, five administrations. It's been six years because we didn't administer it in 2020. So that is one of the questions that we wrestle with. Is it survey fatigue when it comes to, to families? Is it too long of a survey? Should we be surveying on something different? So I would ask for you, as we're going through this, to be thinking about what you find as a committee and then as parents and former parents of students, what you find most valuable from this? Because we would be really interested in hearing those, those nuggets, if you will. So again, it's the 11th survey of this and we will go through some of the slides. If we pass by one of the slides that you would prefer for us to, to go back to at the end, just make a note and we'll, we'll go back to that. So I think it's important to remind everyone that this is perception data. And so it is based on those that are taking the survey. You really can't extrapolate that out generally to everyone else. And that, at the same time, when we're not generalizing the data, it is, as you heard from the three elementary principals, it's still very rich data for us to take in account to see what people are feeling, keeping in mind the time of year that it's administered, which is at the end of the school year in May. So it's between April 4th and May 6th is when this one was administered, with many different reminders that went out as well. But it does really help us in thinking about the things that we're doing. Are we on track? Are there any things that stand out to us that we need to dig further because it causes curiosity for us? So as far as the participation, as I mentioned, the parent participation, we have about a 20% participation rate when we think about the number of invitations that go out. And as K-12 Insight, which is, they administer different surveys like this nationally, is, is it actually a good return rate, if you will, for our parents? And we know that we have highly engaged parents. So that's not surprising to know that, you know, nationally we see that. But it is the lower percentage that we've seen in the last five administrations. As far as the overall quality, we continue to see high marks and consistent feedback from our families. I am on the wrong slide, so I apologize there. When we look at the overall quality as far as excellent or good. Now, when we see parents and faculty and students, it's not surprising that you see, in this case, 24% of students are saying fair there. That's actually still much higher than across the nation. But then we look back over the last 11 administrations, that's pretty consistent with what our students say. So that's when it's important for us to dig further into the data on what are the things that are important to them. And sometimes it has to do with food in the cafeteria or it has to do with the amount of homework that they receive.
I, I will just add, if you can go back, the anomaly on that slide is actually the, the overall faculty perception. That's 96% of our faculty are rating the quality of our schools as excellent or good. And that's actually very favorable in comparison to national trends. So I think that's important to note as we move forward that, you know, we're, we're getting really great reviews from our faculty. They're, they're proud of what we do.
Thank you.
And I just realized I skipped over kind of the summary and insights here. I want to go back to that slide here. When we're looking at all of the data points, it's, if there's a difference of five points, it's considered significant, whether we're going one direction or the other. So I think that's important as we look from year to year. But the highlights here, when we look at the parent section, parents feel that they're kept informed, that we have, you know, really nice 12 percentage point gain there of the opportunities for them to be involved, to hear about those activities, whether it's student performances or the different workshops. When we think of whether they're in person or they're online, all of the different opportunities for parents to be engaged. So that was a nice highlight for us to see there. We also saw favorable, favorable results when it came to just the, the communication piece of that. As far as that next section there, this is one, this is vaping that we've talked about before. We'll talk about this a little bit more this evening and with some more specific data points. As far as the safety and behavior dimension, that looks, the decreases that we see there is the lower percentages for, for vaping not being an issue. We hear it, we see it in the data from faculty, we see it from students, and we see it from parents as well. So those are some percentage points we'll look at a little bit more. We saw an increase as far as the inclusive setting that's promoted in schools. You've heard about that in the school improvement plans, the district plan for success, the focus that we're doing as far as making sure that every student feels like they belong. So we were happy to see that play out in the data and we'll continue to watch that so that students, when they're feeling as though the environment is inclusive, that their backgrounds and celebrations are being recognized. As far as from the faculty lens, they, they really, it really stands out that they continue to have strong and effective leadership and they're, and they're stating that in the data. And that's really important too, knowing that our leadership changed over by 50%. So consistency over the years, we have had really highly effective leadership and that's continued. And then we see in different points as well, that even increasing even more so, which is really wonderful to see with our leaders that are recognized there. The other item there is when we're talking about the collaboration time, you heard about that from the principals and increasing there. That is an area where teachers have continued to ask for more time. You've seen the efforts in order to make that happen. And from the student lens here, one of the highlights that we wanted to point out really goes to those social emotional learning competencies and seeing a higher favorability in those areas when it looks at the competencies such as self-awareness, self-management, decision-making, growth mindset, and relationship skills, particularly later in the data, just the areas of the self-management and then the relationship skills were some areas that stood out for us. Those slides showing a cross-section of our parents that answered, it really did cover quite nicely from kindergarten on up, the cross-section that was there. So academic preparation over time, you have three years' worth of data here. These three years are, we're kind of defining those as post-COVID, but we went back to look at pre-COVID as well. And how did those data points compare when we look at what parents are saying and how well students are prepared for the next grade level? Are they receiving instruction that's meeting their needs and is it effective for their abilities? Are they setting, are teachers setting appropriate expectations for student learning, et cetera? So when we look at those, we continue to see stability and high marks over time. Now, one of the areas that we kind of glommed onto there was that teachers give me useful information about how to help my student. That was a question, is this post-COVID? Is this pre-COVID? When we look at what is the information? So because that one is, is not as favorable as compared to what you see with the higher marks on that children are prepared for the next grade level by teachers, et cetera. Those are ones that, it really kind of varies when you look by grade level. So keep in mind, this data is overall district data. So when you tease this out and look at elementary, middle, and high, that's going to look different and the needs are going to be different. But that's just the, an example of when we see something like that district-wide, well then let's dig into that and to see if it's skewed because it's high school and it's parents feeling as though, I'm not able to do the calculus and to help my child. Or their essays that they're writing in English, you know, it might not be, you know, their area of expertise as well. So how does that change from grade level to grade level? When we look at student support here, one of the things that we look at was my student is able to meet with a member of school, such a counselor or a teacher, and to find help with school problems or personal problems. When we look at that 17% of don't know, that lets us think, think about, well, what are ways that we need to communicate even more to parents so that they know that these supports are there for not just school problems, but it could be personal problems? I'm thinking about the example that Mr. Stanton gave with the wind block and with counselors. If they have students that maybe their, their parents are going through a divorce and they're needing help with some of how to manage that, it's meeting the needs of those students in different ways. And so it could be a school counselor or it could be a teacher. It's a matter of knowing that those resources are there when they may not realize it as much. When we look over those administrations there for those three years, the other piece here is what we did not find is really a difference prior to COVID. It is all very similar in the data. With administration, I think that this is really kudos to our school-level leaders, the principals and assistant principals, when you see the high marks here, that they are available, that they are courteous and listen to concerns, and that they were responsive.
When you think about that previous data point too, where, where parents had shared that they're, they're given ways that they can help their student and, and you compare it to this, we're seeing positive growth and positive movement on, on this slide. And this is the information that our teachers are typically communicating to our families. So it's, it's, it's not necessarily a gap in communication. It could very well be, I cannot do my child's AP Biology homework with them, which, you know, is a real need, but a real issue at home in my house, I would say. But when you look at, parents are, are informed on students' grades, on, on behavior. Their, their teachers are available. These numbers are consistent over time. And we also added an additional question. You'll see that there, there's data missing from the two previous school years. Something that we do each year, Dr. Bertus had mentioned earlier about, is the survey too long? We look at the survey. We try to shorten it where it needs to be shortened, when we're getting data that feels redundant. And we also add additional questions out of our own curiosity. If we're seeing a trend in one direction, we want to make sure that our assumptions or our suspicions about the data are, are accurate. So we did ask this question additionally this school year and, and continued to get a favorable response.
When it comes to safety and behavior, one of the things that we know that we've spent a considerable time talking about here is all of the work that we've done, from training to our plans, to our responses, and safety is number one in our first priority. In this particular area, it's really covering also any bullying or threatening behavior that takes place, looking at the reporting of that, the school resource officers, and then procedures in school. So when we see that we have 27% that don't know whether the behavior is rare or not, or we see 40% of parents saying they don't know whether they're responsive to students reporting bullying, that causes questions for us. We then look at that over time to see how that has changed. And a lot of the conversations that we've had from the teacher level to administrative level, through professional development, is that idea of what is bullying? Is it student conflict and working through that? Or is it something that is repeated and what is the, the definition of that? And we've had a number of presentations for students. We've implemented curriculum when we think about responsive classroom at the elementary level. The responsive classroom has expanded to the middle school. Second Step has expanded from the middle school down to the elementary and really looking at what are our anti-bullying curriculum, what is the impact that we have out of that? And then looking at this question across parents, across staff, and across students and what we see here. So as far as the perception of this, for those that answered it, it has remained pretty consistent. But the percentage points, when you're looking at an average of there, of 45% are saying that it's, that it's, whether you agree or disagree that it's rare, we're then looking, well, is that a communication? Is that a response? Is it curriculum? Is it what's taking place of how it's handled in schools? And that is something that we saw bubble up across the different levels. And then thinking about the curriculum that we've implemented, what are the, when we think about morning message in responsive classroom, if something happens as an incident on a playground, that's something teachers can bring back and have a conversation about and to talk about the actions that took place or maybe the actions that didn't take place or how others reacted to it. In continuing with the idea of safety and behavior, looking at alcohol use, drug use, or vaping use. Again, you see a lot there as far as not knowing. Because parents, a lot of time, are going to hear about it from their students. With vaping being not a problem during the school day, that isn't something we talked about last year. If we look at the percentage there, you can see that it has declined as far as those with the agreement of it being a problem. We also implemented the Pride surveys, which is a survey that talks about direct usage. And so that's data that we can look at. It's a, a survey that we used to administer every other year. We went back to that. We had gotten away from it from a number of years. And that data is really important for us because as we look at perception, what people believe versus what students are actually reporting, there's a big discrepancy. So the thought that it's happening more than it is and what students are actually reporting, there is a discrepancy there. We also see that the vaping piece is not as prevalent of what people think, but those that are vaping are, are quite honestly more addicted and they're needing help. So those different approaches, something like IDecide, which is through Mass General and working with students, which is an alternative to disciplinary action that takes place for those that have been caught vaping at school, that is a way to provide education for students that then can reduce disciplinary action at the same time. So we're looking at different other proactive ways to be able to help students with that. There's been conversations about, and I know this came up in the parent meeting that we had just recently, about bathrooms and bathrooms being locked during certain time periods such as passing in the hallways. The high school is having to do some of those things in order to, when we look at students going to bathrooms, we've heard, well, I don't want to go to the bathroom because I don't want to be guilty by association. And if we have to have monitors outside classrooms or if we have to lock bathrooms, that is there to be able to make a difference on what we're hearing from students and then also with opportunities to not engage with vaping as well. But what we have learned is it's a small number. People think it's a larger number, but it's a smaller number and it's repeat offenders, if you will. But those are the students that we're really trying to help, who, who need the help because we know it's so highly addictive.
So one of the new additions for the highest and low-enraking items this year is my student has been prepared to do well in this grade- is my student has been prepared to do well in this grade level. We're really happy to see that there as a new highest ranking indicator for us. And, you know, we're seeing, as Dr. Berdus had mentioned, the continued concern with the vaping. And, you know, there's also that recurring theme from last year as well where parents want more information about how to help their child. And that's, you know, that's certainly a reasonable request, so. But a couple of those items that have remained on top, parents being informed, our parents are helping their students with homework every night and they're kept informed about their students' grades. Those are all things that we really want to hear from our families. So it's good to see that those are continuing to be highest ranking indicators for us.
We've talked a lot about diversity, equity, inclusion, and the sense of belonging. So when we look here from a parent perspective and what they're saying as far as their students' experience and that they feel that the student school promotes acceptance or it celebrates differences or it promotes an inclusive setting, we were happy to see that these are continuing to show the gains that we want to see based on the efforts that are being made. So that positive change from parents recognizing that. We know faculty and staff have recognized that and students have in the data too. But for parents to see that and for it to come out here shows that the efforts that are being done in schools is making a difference. So now we're going to switch gears to the faculty data here based on these same questions. I'm going to go forward here to the comparison of school leadership over time.
This slide just makes me very happy. As you know, with 50% of our leadership team being new last year, there's certainly, we're getting to know each other. New principals are getting to know their staff. And we've seen movement in the right direction in, across all of these indicators, which is really great, a really good sign. We've made a lot of headway in a short period of time building culture and building that environment where our teachers feel like they have decision-making power and influence over teaching and learning in their schools. I did want to make a note about the professional development indicator. As you can see, it declined in the previous year and then it declined again in this past school year. One of the things that we survey staff all the time at the end of our professional development days and then also intermittently throughout the school year to see what their professional development needs are. And we try to be really responsive to what those requests are. So one of the data points that came out loud and clear last year in the surveys that I've personally analyzed is, you know, please no more virtual training opportunities. I think that there's been an uptick in the number of organizations that can offer PD in a virtual setting. And there's advantages to that. You can, you know, connect with someone in Colorado that you may not have been able to bring out to your district in previous years. And there's also a little bit of screen fatigue associated with that. And teachers are asking that we have in-person training and that we get back to that. And we've honored that request to the degree that is possible with some variations, but we're moving away from that. The other piece is, and it speaks to some of the earlier data points that we talked about with teachers asking for more collaboration time. Teachers have consistently asked for more content PD, more curriculum-based, grade-level PD. And that's something that we've honored this year as well. We've really made sure that each one of our professional development days are 50/50. 50% with content curriculum PD. As a former curriculum director, I know that that time is really important and teachers don't get enough of that time. I would give them more time if I could. So teachers are really enjoying that this year. So we've made those two big changes and I think that'll move things in the other direction for next year.
This is what I was speaking about before. This is just the faculty perception. So when we look at this across the board, you see increases there when it comes to something such as what we were talking about before, the bullying and threatening behavior is rare as opposed to when we look at the data results from parents there, they had so much that they didn't know. Faculty obviously are in schools, they're going to have a better idea there. But the one that still stands out there from the faculty as well as the parents is during the school day vaping is not a problem. So only 56% agree that it's not a problem. It is something that again is a topic of conversation and what can we do from a proactive stance to support our students? And again, it's a minimal number from what we're seeing, but those that are there, the numbers that we're seeing is how can we best support them?
That's just a different slide than what you're talking about, I think.
I think it's the next slide.
Thank you. Forty-two. So that makes it a little bit easier, right?
If you're following along at home.
Fifty-six percent there. Now, if you look at that, for instance, if you look at the yellow line, which is 2020, 2021, that's the hybrid year. So when we look at some of those yellow lines there from that year, we think about, well, what's the context? A lot of kids were not in, were not in school. But again, it's what are we, you know, we've brought presentations, we've brought curriculum down to lower levels at the middle school as an example. The presentations that we've had for students, that we've had for families, different alternative methods to be able to help students that, as we know, are highly addicted, which is a small percent. But again, they're reaching out for help and counselors are working with them and working with families as well. But it's definitely not a Foxborough problem. It is a nationwide problem. This slide, what I'd like to point out here, which goes to school operations, one of the declines that you'll see here is students have access to reliable computers and the internet at school for learning purposes. So that's been a conversation at our administrative teams, at school-level teams. And I can tell you, part of the frustration, it comes to when students break computers and they need loners. We only have so many computers and getting those back, that's part of the problem. And that's something that is more so middle school and high school because students are not taking the computers home, the laptops, at the elementary level. And when they're broken, they don't get fixed right away. We're getting them back as soon as we can. So that is an issue. We're also increasing the bandwidth for internet at the middle school and the high school.
Is it middle and high school?
Okay. So those are some things that we're, you know, that we're working on. But at the same time, when you go one-to-one immediately and you have that many computers that you're having to support and we've not been fully staffed with the technology team, those are challenges that we are addressing. But at the same time, I have to say that our technology team, when they are going out to address concerns, sometimes it could be something as it wasn't plugged in. So we have to, I mean, their tech tickets, they're able to track all of that data and look at it and see the response and things that are within two days or less sometimes, immediate. But at the same time, there's some things that are just human error. So communication's really important, communicating the problem. But we've definitely had a hardship with the number of devices that students have damaged. And we have repeat offenders there as well. And then having a number of loners, there are only so many to go around. I don't know. Bill, if there's anything else you have to add to that?
No, but I think from a budget point of view, it's going to be a major component as we move forward. I guess as a parent and as, you know, administrator, I just find it so hard to believe the kind of damage that we're seeing. And I would hope that parents, if they're seeing it at home, would take some action because it is astonishing, the stuff we're getting back. And, you know, someone will say, well, it dropped off his desk. I could throw the computer at that wall and I wouldn't do as much damage as what we're getting back. And, you know, from our perspective, it's very hard to have 2,500 computers out there for students that are fully reliable, fully working, if they're not going to be taken care of. You know, the old thing, you got a book and if you rip the pages out of the book, you bought a new book. This is much harder, obviously. This book is a lot more expensive. And then, you know, we get into arguments with people about, you know, somehow it's our responsibility to control this. It really isn't. We can only control what we have in front of us. We can't control when something goes home and something happens to it. And quite honestly, it's not going to be never-ending unless we start taking money away from other parts of our budget to support this.
There's a trend here. Highest and low-end ranking items are my favorite slides to talk about. So new to the list this year, which makes me very happy and very proud to be a part of the Foxborough community, is I enjoy teaching at this school. I think that's fantastic that that showed up this year in a highest ranking indicator. And that makes me so happy because as you know, as our elementary principals have shared earlier, there's a lot, there's a lot happening in our schools. There's a lot of work. There's a lot on our teachers and, you know, to have that joy and for them to feel supported, you know, that's why we do what we do. So that's my favorite data point of the evening. Also, a new data point, students at school are treated fairly regardless of their race, culture, religion, sexual orientation, gender, or disabilities. I'm really proud of the work that we've done in our DEI committee and throughout our buildings, through our school improvement plans for this data point to show up in our highest ranking. And it brings me joy that we're doing good things here. A lot of the items that have shown up on our lowest ranking items are known concerns. Our elementary school improvement plans have highlighted increasing teacher collaboration time. You'll see some changes at the middle school as well when that improvement plan is presented in a few weeks. They've also made some changes. We know our teachers really want to collaborate with each other and really value that time and we're trying to make it work in any way we can. But it continues to be an ask for our teachers.
Just wanted to point out here from the faculty perspective, when we're looking at the five competencies for students, that one of the ones that really stood out here for social awareness, that students in my classes value the opinions of others even when they disagree. And then students in my classes do not tolerate the bullying or teasing of other students. So I think that's important when we see those percentages. There's, you know, nine-point gains in both of those areas. So although some may not know or they may think it's rare, what we're seeing here from students and really being able to work with each other, and it's okay to disagree. And how do you work that out? I mean, that is a life skill. The relationship skills here, you see across the board growth in these areas. We've only asked these questions for two years, so that's why you only have the two data points. But when we look at students being comfortable with interacting with their peers or interacting with adults, we heard some of that in the teaching and learning highlight this, you know, this evening and students being more comfortable with that and getting out of their comfort zone, being able to communicate with others. I mean, those skills, soft skills, whatever you want to call them, are so critically important for life skills that students will carry with them beyond their pre-K-12 education. Looking here, access and opportunity. Again, looking at the equity lens here, we talked a little bit on the district plan for success on the disproportionality piece. So we see a decrease here. Again, we've only had this question for two years, but we see a decline in this one area where students of all backgrounds have equitable access and opportunity to participate in advanced offerings, programs, AP classes, honors classes. Part of that, our wondering is, are people so much more aware? Because that is our focus. We're really looking to be able to tackle any inequities. So do we see a decrease there because of our hyper-focus on looking at that? And now it's something that people think more about. But it's definitely something from a disaggregating the data, what are the opportunities for students and making sure that equitable access is there across whatever content area or grade level? And then we're talking about belonging and inclusive environment. These are high marks when you look here for being in a school and teaching and being an educator in a school promoting height, promoting, a school that promotes acceptance. To see, and again, this is district, this is 99%. Those are high marks and it's consistently high over the years as far as feeling as though they're in a school that's celebrating differences, that's promoting an inclusive environment, that's really taking the time to learn about student cultures. But when we look at that question in particular, we're then taking that back. As faculty, they feel as though they're learning about students' cultures. But do students and do parents feel the same thing? It's not as high as that. It's still high, but that's where, okay, well, where's the disconnect? But I can say from firsthand experience and working with teachers on our DEI committee, that's been a big focus of ours. What are our other opportunities to make sure that we are celebrating all students and all stories and everyone that comes through? Because everyone has a story. And what is that environment that we're creating? And making sure that families that come in, they feel as though they belong as well as students belong in classrooms. So high marks, but again, we still have points of curiosity that we're digging into. And we'll shift gears here to students' perceptions. And again, this is students in grades five through 12.
I think what I like best about this slide is that everything is moving in the right direction. Kids, our students feel prepared, they feel challenged. We're seeing positive growth. A data point consistently over the course of last year, I remember this coming up and I know it was a common trend. My teacher shows me how our lessons relate to life outside of school. You know, change is slow and it takes time to change minds there, but I do see a positive growth, things moving in the right direction for our students and their perception of that statement. So we're getting there with convincing them that school is relevant and what we're learning in class is relevant. And positive changes on this one as well. One of the data points that I'd like to mention, there is a teacher, counselor, or other staff member at school I can talk to about a personal problem. If you think back to the parent data in particular, there was a lot of I don't know. But we're seeing positive growth in that direction for our kids. There is a big jump there, 7% jump there, which is good. We're raising awareness that those resources are available to our kids. And we're seeing, we're seeing positive growth in some other areas as well on this slide.
From the student perspective, when we look at safety and behavior, the staff members are responsive when students do report. Well, you see there that you're seeing increases every year there and that's going back from previous administrations of this survey as well. You also see nice gains with school resource officers being an important and necessary presence at our school. We know, we've talked a lot about here, our partnership with the Foxborough Police Department and all public safety and how visible they are in our school and really from a community policing and having just that relationship to where they can build positive. and having just that relationship to where they can build positive relationships with students. So then whether it's the police academy with our youngest kids or just being at lunch, having conversations, it really is important. And so we were really happy to see here that the students are recognizing that it's a necessary presence in school. And it's really the full piece of this from a safety standpoint, but also we know from what we see with the relationships and just the conversations that take place with our officers.
And new to our highest ranking indicators this time around for our students, my teachers give me extra help when I need it and my teachers tell me how well I do on my assignments and tests. So it's nice to see that those have arrived in our top five. Also fairly consistent, I've been prepared to do well in this grade level. Our students are consistently telling us that they do feel prepared to be successful in their grade level. And consistently in our top five, my parent or guardian asks me about my day at school. So that's nice to hear and we know, just based on our experiences in the Foxborough community, that our parents are really supportive of our students and it's good that that remains high. The other items that I wanted to point out, like for example, my teacher shows me how lessons relate to life outside of school. It continues to be one of our lower ranking indicators. However, we are seeing growth there. Likewise, there is a teacher, counselor, or other staff member. We're seeing growth there. On earlier slides, you saw that growth. It's just that change is slow and that perception is still a lower ranking indicator, but we're moving in the right direction on those.
On this slide, a question that we asked for the first time and it came out of really teasing out the data from previous years is my guidance counselor helps me to prepare for plans after high school. So we would see whether it was post-secondary planning, whether it's military or any of that. But what we were missing was, are we helping students if they are thinking more career-oriented? Or they're not really sure what they want to do? And so that was a question that we wanted to be able to have a baseline for in asking that. So we've got 71% of students that are agreeing that they are helped with preparing for after school, after high school. And that's not just when we think about career and academics. I think about the other activities from career fairs that take place. And then when we see from group guidance and then taking some of that information that we've learned and implementing that within those group guidance classes, which really during previous years and particularly during COVID, it really kind of fell short. But that's also coming from things that we would hear from verbatim, the verbatim reports, which is what students actually write in the open comment sections. We're able to take that information and see, well, where are we hitting the mark or where are we not?
So there are a couple of social-emotional competencies that we wanted to highlight here because these actually showed up as significant concerns for our parents and for our teachers last year. So we're seeing positive growth in student self-awareness, ability to recognize their own feelings, explain how they feel, explain their needs, ability to assess what their strengths are and where they may need to learn and grow. We're seeing positive growth in the right direction for that one. And the other item that was a significant concern, if you move to the next slide, is time management. It continues to be a bit of a concern for our parents and that's understandable and also for our teachers, but we are seeing positive growth here. And if you remember from last year, our students identified that they really need help with this. That was actually one of our priority concerns coming out of last year's survey. So to see that positive growth and to know that we've responded to that and we're paying attention to that and we're building those skills for kids is a great thing. So, good data there.
I wanted to stop on this slide here from the student's perspective because what we see here in this data is that it does align very well with parents' perception data at the same time as far as the promotion of acceptance and celebrating differences and inclusive setting and having someone there to go to and to talk with. That is really important that we know that we're creating that environment of inclusivity. And to see that these numbers, you see the growth there over time as well, but you also see the alignment of what parents were saying in the data as well. So, you know, we feel that we're working really hard at that, but when you see it in the parent and the student data at the same time, it helps to solidify that our efforts are being recognized in the work that's being done by our teachers and staff.
So overall, the 30,000-foot view, we're really proud to see that our students have had positive perceptions of our teachers. They feel prepared for this, for their grade level. We're hearing overwhelmingly from our students and from our parents that our teachers are communicating about grades. There's effective communication. There's an overall satisfaction with their student preparedness for school. We like to hear those things. And you're also hearing from our staff and our parents that social-emotional learning is a priority and they understand fully that it's a priority. Overall areas of growth. And you'll hear a little bit of this highlighted already in our goals that we've put in place for this school year and then also in school improvement plans throughout the next couple of our meetings. There's a call for more collaboration time from our teachers. We understand that. There's a bit of a discussion. There seems to be an opportunity for discourse with homework and rigor. It seems that the students have different feelings about the amount of homework than our parents and our teachers do. So there's an opportunity there to have that discussion. And, you know, there were some data points that, you know, there's an opportunity for communication with the resources that are available to our students and to our families. And a couple of opportunities for communication there in terms of supporting students socially, emotionally, and interpersonally with what we have in place for staff.
I think one of the things that really stands out for me is when you talk about the homework piece and you have the different, it's too much, it's not enough. The academic rigor, it's too much, it's not enough. It's always trying to find that balance. So this is again, the 30,000-foot view, but it's really taking this information back by building level and for principals to work with teachers to be able to provide context to it. When they see whether it's, you know, a small gain or a big gain, what do we attribute that to? What's the work that they've been doing and what does maybe this mean? So some of the things that we've been questioning are when a parent is answering the survey and it's talking about overall school quality, are they thinking about, my student has been prepared for the next grade level? Are they thinking about the immediate year, just that year? Or are they thinking about the whole elementary experience? So we asked that to the parent leaders. And really got consensus that they will know where they were thinking about just that school year. But that's important for us to know because when we're having those conversations, are they thinking about the whole elementary experience or the third grade experience? Now granted, that's dip-sticking within that small group, but we heard that same consistency there. But those are the opportunities that we have to dig into the data a little bit more. And if we see any discrepancies that causes pause, what does that mean? Or at the same time, all of the programs that implemented are really where teachers have spent so much time and energy, is it paying off?
Thank you.
We cut out like 70 slides, just as a point here, too.
Any questions from members? Brett?
Going backwards to forwards, the thing you just said, Dr. Barrows, in terms of the opportunity for dialogue around homework. Curious what comes of that. I guess, a next-level question I have and I don't know if there's a way to glean it between the lines of the data, is rigor and amount are one thing, I guess. The question I have is like, maybe it's people's perception on the value of it. Like, is the homework worthwhile? Like, yes, this is helping me learn. It's relevant to the class and it's not something that I consider. You know, we talked years ago about busy work and stuff like that and whatnot. Like, is there a value to it? I'm curious if that's something that is gleanable from the data we have or is that maybe a separate line of questioning?
I do feel as though those discussions need to happen at the building level because it's so different. And the data point that we're pulling is representative of K-12 parents and just our middle and high school students. So if you think about that and then obviously our K-12 staff as well. So if you think about that, there's variations between fifth grade and seventh grade in terms of those expectations because, you know, as our students move through school, the different courses that they begin to take have different expectations. So I think it's something that our principals would need to tackle and take on at the building level to really dig into what the issues are there.
A lot of work was done at the middle school level last year with a team of teachers, with the administration. And I think that you'll be hearing about that at the next school committee meeting as part of the school improvement plan, too. Because there's a lot that was really going back to what is the purpose and the value? And what does it look like, to your point, as far as at fifth grade versus seventh grade versus eighth grade?
Thank you. Follow?
Yes. The next question connects the overall areas for growth and slide safety by students on slide 69. And it was a comment that you had mentioned, Dr. Barrows, on bathrooms being potentially a place that people feel less secure, less safe. I would imagine that does transfer across schools and districts and things like that. I guess a question is, and maybe there's not an answer right now, is, is there anything we as a committee can do to help support any next steps that you all would, beyond your wish list of taking for that regarding? Some schools do card readers, some schools have to staff the bathroom, some...
And we do. We staff. You're talking about, you have a body at these different, there are duties for teachers for the periods of time throughout the entire day. So you have a lot of people that are having to staff bathrooms. To also help with students feeling that they didn't want to go into the bathroom, so they're not congregating. And then that way, they're also like almost the peer-to-peer, like three are in the bathroom, they need to get out. So then the next ones can go in. Right now, we've got the bathrooms locked during passing time. I know that Dr. Donovan and his team, they want to be able to open some of that back up. But they were also finding, it was lunchtime and you'd go in a bathroom and you would have students in there with their lunches and they'd be sitting on the floor in the bathroom. People are wanting to go in. So it is something that teachers are grappling with, they're frustrated with, administration as well. Biggest bathroom, get in, get out. At the same time, we want students to be able to feel as though they can go into the bathroom and not be hesitant because of, again, we know we've had fire alarms go off because of the vaping that has taken place in a bathroom. The administration spends a lot of time having to follow up with using the camera system in order to find out who that was. It's a drain of resources when it comes to that. So in order to best meet what they're trying to do as far as the challenges in front of them, if it means locking bathrooms during passing times, then that's what they need to do, you know, staffing them outside. But we need students to work with us, too. And we don't want a few that are causing problems for the many.
I did just want to bring up a quick point to that. You said that there are always bathrooms available all the time. Just some of the mainstream bathrooms in the hallways and things like that are being locked just to avoid these situations, correct? So it's not that no bathrooms are available. You did, you had pointed that out in an earlier like parent meeting that was televised, so I just wanted to highlight like that. You know, everyone has a place where they can use the restroom at any point in time throughout the day.
Anyone else?
Of course, right? I thank you both for your preparation and thank you for everybody who participated and gave feedback. I want to underscore, there's some stuff on here that if you read the line item and you look at the numbers, they don't necessarily make sense on a K-12 level. So anybody that's looking at this data, I would highly encourage you to look at the building level or at least the level of, whether it's high school, middle school, or the elementary schools because some of these questions just don't make sense, or some of these responses. So it's very, very important to understand that the aggregate is good, but the real value is at the school level for anybody that wants to look at this data, as you guys have reminded us repeatedly tonight. And again, if people have questions about this, they know they can go to the administration or to the building level and get more information about these things. And finally, just, we didn't talk about it in here, but it is, you know, this is another opportunity to participate in our schools, to the community. And we want feedback. Y'all want feedback. The building leaders, the teachers want feedback around what is working, what is not working. Whatever we can do to increase participation from parents. You know, I don't know what you guys are looking at, how we can support that, but 25% is, I think, a little bit disappointing because this is a rich opportunity to participate and give direct feedback around your students' experience and your experience with our schools. So that wasn't really, was that a question or a comment? I'm not sure. Okay, both.
Observation. Thank you, though. Thank you. Anything, Michelle? Anything else? Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you again for this because this is one of the favorite first school committee meetings I ever had when I first started coming to school committee meetings is just being impressed by how transparent you all are with the data and saying, let's crack it open and look at it. And there's no ego attached to it. You do this in the way that we want our students to inquire in the schools and we want teachers to evaluate. It's, you all model it from leadership on down. And exercises like this where we kind of just look at the data honestly and unflinchingly is, it's wonderful. It's refreshing and it's not done everywhere. So thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I agree, Brendan. I think it's a super important information. I think it's very valuable for individual parents to look at the data that comes from the broad spectrum of school and/or district and then apply it to their own thinking as well. You know, my impression, my feeling about what I think the school system is and this is what other people see, how does that differ as well to for my child and my families, too? So really good, really, really good information. This is super important stuff. Thank you.
One other comment I would just like to make as far as sharing this, I think it's important. We don't take this presentation and put it up on the website or anything like that because we can't, because it's not open source and we pay for this survey and all of that. So all of the questions that would be there, I think that's probably an important piece just in case people were starting to go look for this. But if they have questions, like you said, at the school level, but again, building leaders are using this with their school councils, with their school improvement plans and all of that.
Glad you said that, yes.
To link to the school improvement plans we saw, yeah, no, I like that you were linking back to your high priority items from last year because we are seeing movement down those and we are seeing those living in the pillars for success, this district plan, your goals, and now the elementary improvement plan. So I really appreciate the level of integration that you all put into this.
Thank you. Any final questions on this topic at all?
Thanks for presenting it.
Great. Let's move on to notification of community events. Anyone have notification of any community events? of any community events?
Hello?
Yeah, please.
Parks and Rec update. The recreation department has a few new programs. They'll be hosting a teen tween night starting the first, it will be the first Friday of every month, starting in November, from 7:00 to 9:00. It's like a drop-in at the Mill Street Rec. We are also partnering with the historical society to offer a Native American cultural workshop, and the Halloween parade is on October 28th. And just to clarify, the cultural workshop is for kids, children of all ages, and that will be at Memorial Hall. That's it.
Thanks. Great.
Oh, one other quick note. The NHS and Community Warriors continue to be a wonderful source of volunteerism for the recreation department to facilitate these events. So thank you to NHS and Community Warriors, and all of our volunteers.
Thank you. Anything? Anyone else?
No.
Oh, I'd like to say congratulations to the football team. They did a lot of hard work, we had a tough loss, but it wasn't indicative of the whole story. Great job to our football team on the other night for homecoming. And isn't it Special Education Week? I think, I think I saw something that it's like National Special Education Week, or, I'm sorry if I'm saying that wrong. You usually know. I think it's, I saw that some things had been posted. I think there's, anyway. I always celebrate and have so much gratitude to our special educators, so, thank you. I'll make it something.
Great.
Thank you for remembering that.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.